All right. Reputational drivers. I can illustrate this, but just... What is that? You say a word and people respond. What is that called? A word association? Okay, I say... Wanko.
Crazy.
No, you guys...
She's making one.
Magnolia is what I hear sometimes. I say Chick-fil-A.
Customer service.
Customer service. Some people say customer service.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I say... What?
My pleasure.
I say BP. British Petroleum. See? But I do not notice they're doing their best. So what I've been saying is I say Odessa and let's talk about it, okay? What do you want them to say? So, reputational drivers. Who's going first? Deeter's chewing right now, so we'll go ahead.
We're ready.
Go, go, go!
Okay.
Love of the region.
Well, make Odessa a national hub for the energy sector.
National?
Just copying the...
Yeah. Y'all were like...
What? Energy?
For energy.
And that's all energy.
Did I say all?
He even drew a picture of...
Put a check on that. And the same thing. They're arguing they said first.
I told you about that.
They overheard. Okay, excellent.
Become a center for recreational activities.
Y'all got that?
We did.
Yep.
Oh, don't we know?
Well, we expanded on it.
Don't we know?
This thing with us is...
Yes.
Like, what? My hair is shot, so there's no way I have a lot of hair here.
And then they try to take all the time like this.
Hey, I shoot at everything that flies and clean everything that falls.
Are you still on those people?
So we start having fun in the meeting.
Yeah, I try.
Well, I hope that shows a thing. They were having fun. I don't think that's...
We're gonna read about an entirely different meeting.
Dr. William argued that the cavemen were present in the council. What?
Okay, you're saying...
What? Okay. What else on the reputational drivers?
Want a big family friendly, affordable house. And don't be technical, Michael, on affordable nurses work for us. Is there a... I know that the world doesn't know that.
All right. All right.
We want to enhance our medical hub.
We had that here too.
We have that much. It's so true. We've got to do it.
Hey, let's see if they have this.
We have the president of the council board here, isn't that the person in 2000 minutes?
Whatever.
Listen.
We want to build improved quality of life to attract young people, to keep and attract our young people.
Can I just say great quality of life instead of build? Just say great...
Right.
Great quality of life.
We have that, but we expanded customer friendly and customer service.
With what? Great quality of life with?
To keep and attract young people.
What's young?
I knew that question was coming.
Anything below 70. I knew. Good answer. I'm below 70, so I can say that.
I think it's...
Below 70 is fine.
Y'all done?
No, we got a whole list.
Okay, keep going.
We want to be customer friendly as a city facility and accessible to the public.
Okay, good.
We want to have exceptional education opportunities.
That's not unrealistic to have them.
No, we're not just cheap. Thank you very much.
You got it, you got it.
You got it, you got it.
Cindy.
Make downtown a solid destination place and family friendly as well.
Yeah, so it's first.
That's why we got to define which...
I'm trying to be nice.
There's gotta be a button or something.
I know.
Too much of a clue.
I know. We got what they do.
They're special there. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Strive to be drug free.
Drug? Let's just say drug free.
That can stay out.
Drug free. Okay, what else? Give my hand. Come on, give it up. First of all, my check marks.
Definitely.
Yeah.
What?
Definitely.
Tell me what?
Yeah, we really were.
Enhance medical hub?
Yeah.
Great quality, keeping, attracting young families?
We didn't have that.
All right.
We didn't really want it.
Brother, you're a baby.
We really wanted...
You want a non-diet friendly.
Okay, customer friendly. Customer friendly.
We're just vague with that.
Okay.
I want my kids and my kids to...
You know, we had more specific ones.
Okay, let's do the check marks. Let me check right here. What about educational opportunities?
We had that.
Check mark. What about downtown friendly, attractional? What about drug free?
No.
This is not a drug free. They got what I was teaching. What? I'm not going to tear this up. I'm saying, man, we have lots of air. Let's make room for air. Okay, let's add.
I guess that's what you said, Philip said is a mutual aid for first responders who are surrounding areas.
A mutual what?
Aid.
Okay. For first responders.
And we kind of with aid...
Mutual aid for or with through?
With on.
Through.
With, yeah, with through. Okay, I couldn't hear, sorry.
And kind of what we were talking about is we want our first response, law enforcement, fire, and EMS to be the best. We want to be the best. We want to be the best.
And the leaders and the trainers to others.
Which we are.
Keep going, listen.
Yeah, with that, you know, we recognize that we're oil and gas, but we're also beyond... And that's where we're gonna really expand on these. To bring in those more families who aren't gonna be so dependent on oil and gas. We're gonna have excellent hospital district, excellent services like the OFR, OPD, have their medical... And expand on the education also.
With those things, with us having the oil and gas as our background and bringing in like spouses in the medical education of course and things like that. And that's what keeps the family here. And that's what makes us even more family friendly. We want to move away from people coming to Odessa work and leaving their families elsewhere. We want to start attracting those families to Odessa also with opportunities for them.
That's what we said also. No, it was. Y'all just didn't hear that part of the conversation.
People who was in that time.
Entrepreneur comes in, they're oil and gas, and says, "I want to do a downtown shop." Mine's different. You know, it's a repurposing shop. There you go. The broader you do that, the more you... You don't neglect your energy core. You just act... Keep going. Good, what else?
We also brought in, talked about bringing in workforce economy. To, that way you can be, it's just another way to reach out to those families coming in. Like the hospital was saying, coming in for oil and gas. So they don't really need the affordable housing. They need more, I mean, we just supply them enough houses where we can, they can bring in their families and not leave them back home.
That's what I was putting, more than oil and gas, medical jobs, education, families. And I probably should have said workforce stuff, but not putting this together under what you're saying. And maybe I'm not saying this right, more than oil and gas, or is that saying broadening or building upon? What are you saying?
Building on. And I don't know if you want to get too fancy, but Philip even had the three step process.
We're afraid.
Sure, sure. Wait, Philip has all answers?
So for economic development, we want infrastructure, so quality water, quality roads, public safety, and education. I mean, those are the three things that businesses look at when they come to a community. Especially, I think, also as an individual, when you're moving into a city as well, you look at those aspects as well.
Give this group a good hand over there. Woo! And put your check marks. Look at all these check marks. Divided, not divided at all, we're unified around these ideas and we're a lot of agreement and creative ideas. All right. A fun and sometimes revealing, or should be revealing exercises instead of slot analysis if we get a part of our interviews. Let's do hard questions. Hard questions. Wasn't sure, but now that I see how you're enjoying each other, I think we can do this. What are we hopeful about? This may not take a long time. They think, wow, I don't know, we got time for it. What are we afraid of? What are the roadblocks we face? What needs to die? And the staff members start holding their breath. We're talking about from the standpoint of the council. Okay? Those are the hard questions. Can you handle these? If not, I'll build next screen.
Oh, man, that's a piece of cake.
Let's go there, let's go! Give you about 15 minutes to discuss the hard questions.
Let's start with that.
But hopefully the, I think the council, they're not willing to stay staffed. Hopefully, looking to future political roles.
Hopefully, what we can tell the union for ways to address the present issue.
I think the council always move forward, always perform forward. I think we all understand the needs we... And we understand the needs, that's all. And that, well, can we figure out how to meet this?
I'll just be quiet. I'll be quiet. Hold them up. I will be quiet. Forty? Forty? Forty minutes.
Right, five minutes.
Okay, okay, two is up. I think we're all, all you need are, we have ideas.
The whole thing is the most important is staff.
I mean, there's ideas moving forward, but we may not come to commission in our time.
We support and our department.
There's hope that there is a tremendous work.
It takes a hundred years to build a policy. That's a challenge. If you're saying in the town that everybody has...
Hope that we can work together as a council. For the better, I think.
My fear is never attaining, not being able to attain the first.
Everybody who runs for council does it because they have an ego.
Not it. Does it because they have an ego?
Because we all have an ego. Why are we here? Because we think we can do this. We can do something like this.
Is that an ego?
So...
That's what I'm asking. I mean, look at a different pathetic ego. I would think about that. Well, I mean, it's a perspective that's...
It's a male and female perspective.
Okay, thank you. It's been from the Mars. Okay, I'm like...
But I think from the point of view...
Somehow we perhaps can set those egos aside.
I can go into a job, you know, have some ideas.
We have to say, my ideas don't always have to be in a perfect group. I do hope they occur.
That's a good thing, you said, we're hoping that egos can be set aside.
Okay. Well, I put it together.
Yeah, you're...
Together. I don't know, that's a good perspective. I have to... I have to add it on that.
So... If you want.
Maybe the... Probably difficult ever having them planning this. From that time. And then that time.
And then... Out there.
I mean, and that's a fair thing. How do you feel? What do you find? That we do have, what we play there, knowing that this and this is going to be left out and it's needed to.
This will have that old mentality that's like... Or is it...
It's a real fear.
Go to Odessa to raise family.
I mean, that's what happens.
Yeah, that could be... Raise your family. Raise your family. If you go to Odessa to raise a family, go to Odessa.
Well, there is a 25-year plan, and that's probably not in my life.
Well, no, yeah, I mean, and I think about that. I'm scared to be, and I'm thinking about that. Because it's a set place to be at, but...
Most people don't live to be that old.
Your mom's nine.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
What else are we afraid of?
One of the previous exercises, Paul Howard, that I love. That's a... A lot of their investment. Not being able to... Fun parts, not being able to do all that accomplishing it. Well, that's why we... All this kind of...
Now, from that, we're...
They go on and off. What's that?
Afraid of that. That's a...
Well, that's... Here's a great driver. Yeah, but he can drive in one way or another. It's towards success or towards... You can... If you take fear and you let God be your success, then you're in good shape. And if you take fear and say, oh my God, oh Lord, you know what's gonna happen? Then you will pay. I had God tell me that there's a group trying, that is considering filing some of those cities or approving the funding for the park. And I walked away from it. I didn't say this to him, but I walked away from it saying, so if we are afraid of losses, we don't get out of debt in the world. If we're gonna be afraid of opposition...
I actually get out of debt.
I just want y'all to know that the ranking is very clear.
So if we get too...
That's why I get...
So if it gets too... If it gets too litigious, we're gonna have you sleep in.
Oh, no, no, no. It's so much as they... If there's a fight, you're gonna call conflicts.
I think fear are apprehending, so just like...
Back here. There are fear of... In dropping here, I want to, you know, forming a complex...
Consensus.
...in fear of sense. Really, because I'm too big. Because if you say...
That was me. Well, thank you. I mean, it was like...
Check, check. It was just... I mean, they...
It's a no idea.
They stopped paying the rent, but... And French have been coming in with it. It was just... We were getting nothing.
And the... I'm finally having a different... I'm over here on several... She's at the Marshall.
Well, that's...
I'm off. So the downtown here, we have the... And the...
Strike everything.
Maybe that's a fear. But that's a situation a lot smaller, I think. See, I was doing a good job so much, you didn't think the last thing about where we'd be so close tonight. You know, I didn't see the last... We're... Well, I got to do it. We may have over budgeted. We're the... That kind of challenge, and we're the...
We're hoping Martin, when the state opened up, it's...
But that is a fear.
It is a fear.
I've always kept it in my heart. I want to...
We need to...
Yeah.
I think... These are... Now, sixteen... She's in trouble. Is that...
And then that all goes back to... You know, like being well. I mean, I don't know. That's not personally the issue, but I think you take this... It's like a personal...
So I can't...
I think it's when they start really... They're like... They're not... See, that's why they won't... I won't have...
Yeah, that's a pretty... A lot of...
Yes, certainly. And they...
Yeah, that's... It's just a...
We did.
Y'all should get... I mean, I think...
I don't know how you... I don't know how you get past... I don't know how to get past that.
And make that my issue.
That's very hard. Because you can't, you personally can't this... But if you... None of us can do it. But it is still...
Yeah. True, but as time has shown us in the past, the economy has done this all the time. And you have to be able to manage and survive through those times. And so, you know, we face a lot of questions sometimes about being too conservative without not having that risk. And I think those are the things that kind of guide us as management, that we know what goes to be in it. And so, you know, there is that fear. And, you know, if I lost my own name, that's one thing, if I lose my... That's... Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's hard.
What about roadblocks? Unfunded mandates in the state.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And I will put... What we're hoping for? Attorney General's decision this week in that...
There you go.
In that category.
All of us will blow it this time.
Morgan.
Good time to be seen. I was... And those people who invest in still gonna win five bucks.
Yes, and they don't understand.
It's just the same thing.
And how do you...
Well...
Projects are similar, but everyone knows...
Luxuries become accessories with time.
Absolutely. Water will become a very... If it hasn't...
It's...
So then, I know the roadblock based communication coming because I think some of that is a lack of... They don't get it because maybe they've not heard, like, water is not... They're not...
What problem is shooting our massive head? I mean, you go to... You talk to their paper, you talk to their... They all work together.
This is... We don't know that. It's middle reporter Teller who's against the county. Yeah. Middle county. And we got it the other way. Yeah. When the real story's all out in the camp. You know, it's kind of...
People considered... The song... The... Fire. I think there's a message here that's...
We put roadblock OA... It's not... I love something.
Yeah, I hear it.
Well, either I'm not sure that it's not... It's not part of our...
Did I tell you? Well, it's...
Yeah, I think they are.
They did a call, and she said... She said, "Should we check?"
And... Who...
Well, the thing is...
Well, I mean, I mean... Okay, what needs to die?
It's a good thing that...
What needs to die?
When you do, when you do...
I'll make sure we answer our questions when we... That I'm...
What needs to die?
What? What?
Yeah, I mean, she... What? Okay.
It's always one.
But no...
Yeah, it really, I mean, it's readership.
Needs to die, and not... Or in the page.
This is basically what I'm...
Those...
By other...
Again, COVID, that's a good...
Find a solution to...
I think it's stuff within... He said city council, right? What needs to die?
That's a part of that.
And power, yeah.
Sometimes the best thing for strategic vision is for something to die. Not someone, but for something to die. A simple model of strategic vision is a different model we're dealing today. But it's when you begin to realize you're so complex. Your systems are so complex that your city manager and staff can't do it. I'm working with the city. I'm just about to mention it. They're growing so fast and the complexity management of John... Yeah, John Potter said leadership is change and management's dealing with complexity. City managers so busy with complexities of all that COVID brought, COVID brought, and race relations brought, that they never got to lean towards change. And what they're gonna meet, I'm gonna be the facilitator, instead of a ground-up strategic vision like today, we're just gonna say, that needs to die. Maybe another one said that needs to pause for... And that needs to be tabled, Rob and Tracy. But that needs to be set aside for now. I have to say die because of shopping. And some of your committees need to die. From listening to you. Some of your committees need to die. Or you don't ever put that in the press. But you say that committee's gonna be merged with another committee. It's more vital for our future. So I use die because it's an acronym, but you see what I'm saying? It's simplified. What needs to be simplified? Or like a candle. You just put something over it, and oxygen gets to it and it dies. Many organizations that get complex, usually the older ones, they just kind of snub something out without ever meeting the press. It just doesn't get attention. And it's, there's always someone in the city or in the organization, that's their baby. Sorry. Does that make sense? Does that give you all some ideas?
Yes.
Yeah.
I put down some key. That's all I got. But frankly, some egos behind us. Put it down, I said.
What letter do you... What letter do you...
That's...
This is... That's the point I...
I know.
Sell aside.
Better than try to kill them.
You know this, but they asked, you know, do you mean by that? There's a model, which is just called simplicity model. When organizations get... Organizations get so complex that the city staff or the staff can't manage...
We're cutting that.
Leadership is change.
The Democratic Party, Republican Party, when you say... He goes...
Green Party.
They're growing so fast, the complexities are killing them, they can't get to change. So what am I gonna do? I'm gonna help separate the rocks from the big rocks. So I say die because it's part of the economy, because it's... But maybe it's... Put aside. If you ever tried to kill the channel just by putting it all over it, you just don't give it oxygen. Somebody who's...
That's... Yeah. You know, quilting the work industry or quilting, you know, but it just needs to go away.
So that you can focus on the bigger office. And that's... And you already said...
We understand. Because they doesn't... Perfectly...
The president's guy here, so he's...
You'll say, kill the committees, then ask the press.
No, maybe you get two committees put together. They're all... Those kind of creative ways, but you're really killing the committee and their...
Or...
So I don't know if that helps you...
I was giving those...
I think they already got it, but I just want to say...
We're given the absence of knowing all that.
Sometimes do that. It's the big rocks.
But, you know, the first thing you may go to, and they may go against, and then they'll say, we're not aware. I think they... We may, we may even, we don't know that exists, or it is something that we... And that is complex. I have to look at, that is probably the first one, is on the thought of which. So normally I'll...
So normally I'll mess with this, you know, some of this. Because you're trying to find it and it's how complex.
Yeah, speaking of the opposite, where's the whole action that's ever easy?
Right.
And I'm not saying that to complain, guys, I mean, it's a whole world of, of balancing, of guiding. It's understanding what you're doing, following the equipment, you know, that has its own differences.
Sometimes I think the council just does not, it's not, we don't recognize, we just don't know that. You know, and so, I think that's where it has to come back where we trust each other and not to say, you know, I know what this thing is, but based on what you guys know, let me tell you why this may not be happening.
But when you have the two, you have to make that at all. When you're talking to the inspector, when you're talking to the board, they're supposed to let all the organizations. That they got to, when they're supposed to go in.
Well, I always say, you know, it probably, say, when I said, I said, I know too fast this story, this aside I got. And so, you can help me if you don't love.
I'm not sure when, but nonetheless, it happened.
Got a lady who wants a park. She tell you about, um, on West University, there's a piece of land that I think used to be a parkland way back. And it's just not in the.
What was your reason behind thinking to come and decide to take that?
Like, there's no irrigation.
Was the council doing the whole tour?
On which county? I know where you're talking about, it's that little.
So, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the?
You could put playgrounds.
There's another big land, the ice box.
I mean, playgrounds use equipment about all you can do, but it's not. And then, you know, just bowl it, we don't have anywhere to get it, it's just a more.
The playground, as we all know, it's not just a pit.
That's right. It takes you. Is there a path?
We had a path out for her. Maybe I'll see if they can paint the sign, make it so they can recognize their name.
Don't write the answers. You don't like that satisfactory decision?
For committees, egos, bureaucracy, some of the complexities.
You know, it's dealing with human beings, you know, you're not gonna change. Humans haven't changed in 4,000 years. But you gotta try. You're not gonna change, you know what I'm saying?
Some of the complexities.
I've got some schedules I need to move over.
Are y'all ready? Are y'all ready? They're not ready.
They're not ready.
Oh, we're ready, we're, we're already on the next sentence.
All right, hard questions. Don't handle me there, Will. What are you hopeful about? Hopeful, right here.
We're hopeful we can work together as a council for the betterment of the community and set egos aside. Set egos aside. Go back and forth, because they try to steal all of ours, but we didn't have that.
For the betterment of the city, right? All right, we're gonna go back and forth. Right here, what are you hopeful about?
We do not want to be stagnant and we want to be constantly looking forward.
No comments from the popcorn gallery?
We always have comments, we're trying to move the program forward.
We don't want to talk bad about you.
That was ours.
Excellent. Constantly moving forward, back to the ones that are constantly moving the score, what's your next one?
Meaningful ways to address the needs of the community.
Meaningful ways.
And we know they already have that, so maybe they'll look at their next one.
So instead of ways, let's go to ways.
Meaningful ways to what?
To address the needs of the community.
Excellent. Right here, before we go to this other one, community buy-in.
You got the check mark?
Yes, the check.
All right. Was that your next one or do you have another?
Uh, what we were talking about, we're trying to think of the right words, was getting our community kind of in that buy-in on trash and litter and beautifying Odessa. But that can't just be a city thing, we've got to have community buy-in.
Take a try.
Yeah, community pride. I'll take it all.
Over here. What's your next?
Find consensus.
He's gonna hear it.
To find consensus on moving forward, so it's kind of along with it.
What's your?
Find consensus.
I think that's just a check mark.
Yeah.
On which one?
Work together.
That's a good, that's a check mark on your own line up. I love it.
You thought that strongly about it.
You can, and you should. All right, good. Right here.
Um, developing a site and attractive community, is that?
Um, no, maybe, yeah.
All right, right here.
Egos aside.
What are we hopeful about?
That's all we got.
I think we've covered it all.
Sure did. Excellent job, right here. Anything to add? Very hopeful.
Come on, continuous, continuous oil moves.
The staff will tell you, how about just a moderate?
All right. What are we afraid of? You go first.
Funding.
Funding.
That's a check mark.
Funding issues, that's the only one.
Check. Over here.
Failing.
Failing, it's hot beer, by the way, don't bring a hot beer.
That was really good. We didn't have that, thank you very much.
We don't know what cooler is, so. I over prepared because I've always heard the family. Right here. Um, perpetual boost, we're staffing.
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 Stop retention and training.
Yeah, retention and training.
And recruiting.
Yes.
Recruiting, retention.
You know, it sounds like a broker record when I say strategic vision helps, but onboarding, recruiting, you know, and then developing within, it's all strengthened by, I think, a strong vision. You go to potential candidate, either internally or externally and say, would you like to work here? By the way, can I tell you our dream? Or you go and say, would you like to work here? Let me tell you, we don't know who we are. Do you see what I'm saying? Know who you are, you know where you're going. I'm sorry. But see, this beer is addressed somewhat by what you're doing. Okay, where were we last? Right here, right here.
I think we are afraid of not being able to identify and address the critical, all of the critical infrastructure needs.
Ah. All the infrastructure needs?
Yes.
Oh, man, good, it's good. The only city that has this problem, I just wanted to let you know. But, you know, we, we begin to look at it and focus on it and begin to address it. Very good. Another fear, right here, over here.
Being able to embrace the diversity of our citizens.
Why are we afraid of?
Well, not being able to accommodate that, I'm not saying we're afraid of embracing diversity.
Good, next. I think we're done on the first, they're Pat, they're Pat, what about y'all?
The only one that we added to it also was not being able to obtain our economic development.
Falling short of your, is that what you're saying, or are you saying?
The goal is always diversifying economy. Okay, so, you know, what are we afraid of if we don't attain? If it's perpetual growth.
Can I put revenue? Is that okay? Revenue diversification? No?
Yep. It's a credit for.
We're good? All right, excellent, again, facing our fears. Good. Roadblocks. Y'all go first this time, roadblocks, we'll go back and forth.
Uh, public perception.
Hmm, good. Right here.
Money or the economy needing budget.
You put a check mark on that one also for us. Check, right here.
Um, media.
Media.
I thought put a check mark on that one.
Okay.
Unfunded mandates from the state.
It's my, it's my bear, not my.
A lot of organizations to help that.
They used to write that, they write that more nowadays, don't they? More, more keep coming. I mean, strategic visioning, that didn't seem to hit the, and it always hits the, you know. Right here.
A lack of vision.
Right here.
Uh, I think Mara brought up, Mara and Denise brought up, the, um, roadblocks oftentimes are communication. And I think the mayor used the phrase, creating our own narrative. For communication.
Right here.
We, you know, how we talked about having, um, you know, a safe and good, family-friendly community. One of our roadblocks we could are private businesses and residences, not maintaining their property. I don't know, maybe you don't write that in the album.
Lack of pride. Lack of pride. It's good. They're happy. They also get done early. Who told me I talked too long? Okay, anything else? We're good. All right, excellent. What needs to die? I told you I should have set up that background for this one. There's a strategic visioning model that, that really works well in complexity. Never, Cotter, Dr. John Cotter said, leadership leads for change. By the way, you can't choose. Each one of you has to be both. Say, am I leader or manager? Well, yes, managers deal with complexity. What we're hearing is last year was so complex. Right, would you not agree? For all of us, but think about your staff. The things are so complex, wait, let's see, can you hit me with another problem? And so they're dealing with all these complexities and not leading change. Well, also, you've already mentioned one complexity. I mean, it's not a major thing, but it's pretty significant, your, your committees. So I was, probably didn't prime the pump well enough, I apologize, but I should have primed the pump, I said. You know, a lot of times you just have to put a, a, a glass ball over that, like a candle, and just let it go out. Or you take two committees and put them together, but I asked you to talk about what needs to die. What needs to die? Right here.
Some committees. That was original.
I see lots of agreement. Right here.
Negative perceptions.
Good, right here.
Egos.
Egos always need that. Okay, right here.
Uh, competition between, uh, middle and local entities.
Competition.
We know what you're trying to say.
I'll have to read this later on. Hermine Mason, or is it pretty much middling?
Yeah, Hermine Mason. There you go.
Yeah, that just covers, you know, Hermine Mason, just come get him. Right here.
Some of the complexity needs that I, we need to simplify.
Keep it simple, kiss.
Yeah.
Not with COVID. She said, not with COVID, kiss.
Yeah, let's mark through that. Okay, right here.
I mean, it just goes with the negative perception, just a tip on our shoulder that we have. You know, do we have that negative perception of that's so long? Community has a tip on their shoulder, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, you put that together, community pride, people proud of who we are, we're building on that with our downtown, with our family focus, you can see how that could really be important things to die.
We, we, because we had a director for Main Street, the, uh, an architect. And his, his, how he viewed Odessa, he analyzed people in Odessa, he said, it goes so. People here are really great. But I always, I always see Odessa's, they focus on what's built. Yeah, we don't have tall buildings, we don't have rivers, we don't have lakes. He goes, why don't you focus on what you can do? He goes, you have great atmosphere, you have great weather, you're consistent, a work. He goes, you have a reliable source of water, that's not great, but you got it, especially when you're strategically located. I guess in essence what he always said, you're better off as a community and as a people if you focus on what you have and stop focusing on what you will never have. And so, and maybe you'll be better off and maybe be able to get further down the road. If you concentrate on positives and get off the wish list. And, and it's okay to have a wish list, but you're wishing for things that you have. Imagine people, a lake is not gonna appear and there's not gonna be enough movement and, and, and amount of hands drawn to be able to be that recreational river. And so, and I thought it was really simple now, since someone outside that put, uh, something that we as Odessans didn't, probably didn't realize, we've been doing that because we're so programmed, especially us, that we've been here forever. We re, we basically, we're like parents. We keep regurgitating what we've always heard from everybody else. I thought that was really good.
Celebrate your victory, celebrate your win, celebrate your, outstanding. Okay. Good deal. Well, I hate to apologize for being ahead of schedule, we started early and y'all are doing great, but, you know, Sproul said he wanted beer till six. I said, he just, he could be, good for him.
We are in a church, we probably need that.
I got my book of Acts right there, ready to go.
This is, uh, where we kind of end for the day, so this is a really outstanding exercise. This is not the pillars. That'll be tomorrow morning, 8:30, 8:45, unless Councilwoman White says, I really want you to go long and talk a long time tomorrow morning. Is that what you're saying? Start earlier, I'll be here by myself. See, let me tell you, uh, this is where we just kind of press into our pressing needs. Earlier, I, I heard, uh, Councilwoman White, uh, Councilwoman Mari say, this keeps me up at night. I don't remember what you're saying, but that's what we're talking about in here. What keeps you up at night? Obviously, this is not the pillar, but it's a great, go to bed, wake up out, wake up tomorrow, haven't thought about it. What, we pound the table and say, we just got to do something about this. Whether you say it that way or not, let me express it that way. We've got to do something about this. Uh, it's different than what we talked about and it's not the same as pillars, but it's a great exercise. This is the kind of thing you say, I'll lose an election. We've got to do something about this. Now, obviously, you're not all going to agree, but notice where we put this. We're laughing, we're having a good time, now's a good time to say, in my table, I, I just want to share that this keeps me up at night. I pound the table, I, I really want to do it. Why is that also good? Because I believe vision is capping for the soul. Because I believe vision is capping for the soul. So what's been keeping you up could serve as a great discussion tomorrow for our pillars and our milestones. Our milestones, you know what I'm saying? But let's just talk about that. What keeps me up? What makes me pound the table? What is it, since I, 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 I wouldn't be fired over this. I'm an appointed person, but you know what? This is so important to me. I'm working for the city. This is important to me. This is visual. You know, here is mental, I think about it. Here is heart, I feel about it, this is deeper than that. You ever got like, oh, you cut my brother, I bleed kind of thing? That's what we're talking about, all right? Gonna start preaching a little bit? All right, go, 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 we don't want any questions. Let's do it.
What do we do?
Oh, we're doing it right now, though, for tomorrow.
No, no, tomorrow we start pillars, but the rest of the time we have together, which is how long you need for this, what time is it?
Do we need to do it as individuals or as a consensus?
Well, I'll tell you what, that's, that's a really good question. Let's just spend a few minutes just thinking about it as individuals. And when I see y'all nodding at me, that's when I want you to peel into your tables. Uh, do we need to move the tables a little bit closer, or are we good where we are?
Uh, I think given the space that we got, we're probably never real.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna give you a few minutes just to reflect on this as individuals. And then when I see your eyes and I see that you're looking at me, I'm gonna say, peel into your tables, okay? Think about it, reflect upon it.
Do you want to come back to your spot? Do we need to go back to our spot?
I just think some of them.
You're good. Are we doing this as an individual anywhere, or?
He said individually.
And then I think we're gonna turn around.
I guess, I agree. Everyone, I just say, I just say.
Look at the turtle. It's got gray hair.
I know. Just to this.
What keeps me up at night is heartburn. So what did they say, Denise? What did they say?
I'm sorry, I thought we were doing it individually, went back to your.
Oh, okay.
I guess you're saying it as a great.
We gotta keep up.
That one bad.
Y'all ready to go into groups?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's share what we're thinking and feeling.
For every thought. Let me see what you print before you print. I need proof of it. All right.
We're about the same.
I've tried all my life. He does.
How's this to cope? Shake. Sound shaky. I don't, can't write anymore. Ain't reading. If the city is practice.
Our residents, you're like. My mom really fans of me.
Big shoes. You show a big sheet. We did right. Did all the work.
Oh, yeah.
We actually, my daughter started writing, we were looking for, like I said, an existing work, we can find them, let's go. We tried Amazon.
What are the pressing needs of our city? What are the pressing needs of our city? That's what keeps you up at night, pressing needs. What are the pressing needs of the city? That's the question. What are the pressing needs of the city? What are the pressing needs of the city?
I mean, clean up.
What are the pressing needs?
Plastic sacks. Canisters are running back home from energy. Going fields. Drive the place. And we can drive into city. So I, I hate putting up a former. Three thirty-eight, thirty-seven. Did I do that? And then I flew out and just. People are coming into the city. Yeah. You know what I'm saying, it just looks terrible. Our sales tax, each follow streets.
If it doesn't turn around soon, we may not need this new construction.
So, but, but they have, what they require to have, like we have, like we have streets with, the fence here, the house here, and lowways here, and there's a gap between the sidewalk and the fence. And it's, it's like, it's like, yes. It just, it just looks terrible. It just looks awful. And, and nobody knows. And even if it's zero spot.
It goes back to saying what. The smallest commemoration. We couldn't capture. I got criticisms. Because we didn't.
So, so go look, first time.
We didn't keep it exactly the same mill.
Drive down, you can drive down, you can drive down East Ridge.
And you have the sales tax, you follow.
Come to Kent Ridge. And he's got, he's got that corner. Right, solid way. Oversated and wide.
Waste water comes in need of raise.
On the other side of the street, you see.
We have some. Jetters and buildings.
Then, East Ridge.
Need a raise.
Fodder.
Dan does need a raise, but that's.
That's not like, drives me nuts. Drives me, why can't we make them do at least zero escape? Doing a zero standard. And they try to do the five percent. Green, and I think the developers. See, when that, when that code was first done. I'll, I'll lay a story in here. And then go, we first, I can make at least five percent. Those developers, yeah, it was Rochester and, uh, and. And so they started talking about that. But you go down to people like Deepenso or. They do it. They have to do it. And nobody, nobody can. Which is tough. You're telling them to dig them up. Because homeowners. We did a higher tree search with this very fear. I was driving down. I don't know, I'm going to read it. Shallow, the street shallow. And we'll create issues. That whole addition there. There. It's similar to what we do. To East Ridge. Do you, do you. I always know. Eternal auditor. Because it's a little patch about this wide. The sidewalk. The families already on the side. East Ridge. Critical at this point. They don't have hall or association. So some of the bushes are dead, some are alive. So you fading here? You know, I just. My little guessing. Are hauling the wastewater away. I'm not sure that's. There's so many. It deteriorates faster, right?
What keeps you away?
Nothing. Not, not here, I mean, literally, there's nothing that really keeps me away. But, but, but I'm listening to you here, and when it goes to, to, to. And at times, it happens, one, one individual has to.
It all starts with time.
There, there's two mentality, owner, ownership mentality, and the punch to the pot mentality. Now, we have a number of punch to the pot that don't live, that limit the budget to a huge amount. Do you sacrifice the eventual constant gain range to secure? When you take the job, in, in this situation, Roger, in this panel, you are betting on security. You don't get that. And I love, but you even notice, you relate to them. Every year, everyone has to have a rating system for it. They always say, oh, nobody gets. Well, no, because a budget can't. Is there a company that agrees that they work on a financial integration, where the person who works. Because they could, they could, they could make three percent to their overall sale to somebody. Thank you. And they go. Why do you? And so, you know, you like to take, even in the private system. With business, with my business, how I talk, my approach, is that they always saw the final, and they saw the net. They didn't see, they didn't see the imbalance of insurance until I start showing them. Will you pay fifty dollars for two weeks? Okay, to your department, I'm matching this. And so, and so it was education, not. And that's what was going to respect you. The other rules. Always heard. I guess the law have heard, because they don't have a.
Even the maintenance.
We're given that, that kind of always everywhere. Want to kind of control the air.
Do some reasonable background measures?
That probably equals to how much? Almost a billion dollars.
It is, it is. Not, not, I think about this. We were also, right? Just do you imagine how many houses, right? You know, they would show the rest. Okay, then they have to make it believe.
Do this hurt?
Nobody grasps it. And so that's something that always been a potential here in this. And so. Want to can't control the air. But that doesn't get it. The other one, you know, they want to look down to. Our. Nice building. Critical.
Inferences. Yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of like.
Obviously, how we do.
After this.
It, it, it's hard to keep this in.
It's, it's true. Has a recent, very special.
Hospitals.
His favors and.
I've been helping them.
Hospital, he even charged.
I wanted to come to.
Because he has, wants to ask yourself.
You know, with these different.
Plan. For part of a hospital. He always said.
Other ones, you go, is there a? And I don't.
It, it does. We're gonna work. They will be with us.
What's wrong with asking? Because you're fine, I have never walked into a hospital and wondered what's going on. There always. I have never thought about that. But why can't you work with them or say, how can you?
You'll figure it out. You'll get it. And it doesn't keep me up at night because I believe in everything in this.
Pride drives pride, I mean, when you see, you take pride, and, and, and visitors to our city, they're gonna take pride. It, it just be.
They were, and I'm really. You need to ration, you need to ration. Because I saw what was going on.
It's all over, that's hot one. These guys.
Because I had already been experiencing. It's a move around all, you saw side all, did yours all. It's like you. That can't happen. It's the only thing that worries when you're home.
It just kind of goes with the old tradition.
Source of life.
We cost them that to call it.
Remember the guys that. They've taken. Crash. Got me. Seven hundred. A million or something. That, that's. Okay, he made. What he just put next to, to, to Odessa's money, whether it's on the. Because he knows.
Were there any other?
And so, then that had to, this had, I had to, I just had to.
Those are what people are not.
I said that. That's Mary was, that did actually bad news about the. You got plenty of, was a bad. But we have to be considered. Maybe two of them, my constituents, you know, enough to know. The city had. You know, officials enough to know that. Create this here.
Making the right decision with the information that I have, just making sure. That's why. That they're finding out constituents or families somehow compromise.
But with. It's two hundred million. Fifty million.
Everybody wants to.
But nothing but arson. Twenty-four, twenty-six, six of the wells, arson left, they could use. And spending two hundred million. Where they didn't take those wells, two of these wells, and then they leave. The arson. Where they was. A lot of distributed people. Do we have?
I know we've touched on it. But. Or the things that. What are arson? I say it's a crucial, it's really critical. We have cold, but. So that is something more. Our, our issues of the sewer plant. Those things definitely kept us. That's.
Yeah, it's not. It's hard to find stuff. Or the cold thing. It's when they treat. It just. Look at the water.
Right, we took. Because it didn't. That's a.
I trust every example.
And everybody talks.
Force of that. Bearing a lot of electric. Bringing that. Getting those electrical panels.
That movement.
You don't do that. That's definitely. Shake a lot of damp portion of that.
You respond. And, and so if those.
We can't grow. We can bring in.
Everything.
Bring in all the.
Second. Check out. Your business. Your business. Because those are all. Things that we could walk away from. And, but the thing, we can't walk away from. We can't walk away. Sure, water, the least fire. Road. We can't walk. That is. And that, and, and so that is. If we didn't, it's a good shirt. It's always been. You know, because no law. Couldn't. And, and so. Things you're gonna have. It's like a friend of mine. Nobody likes to. Surprise. Nobody wants to. But I know that we can.
There's no arrows.
Doesn't keep me up at night.
Well, you know, that was a very lengthy explanation. That part does not keep it.
But the thing is, I can't tell you what she's going to answer. It's nothing else. I can call, I put in a compartment. I walk out of there. I'm not thinking about. Let me tell you, I got, I got other.
So you have to show me.
Oh, man, you know. It, it, it's really. Man. What we do is like. I mean, it's for a box. I've got a box for. I got a box for my wife, my dad, my brother.
There you go.
Everything's. But I only work. Money box. But I have one box, it's my finger. What is that? It's another box. It is scientifically proven. Absolutely have no thought process. It's still. Yeah. Scientific. Now, we'll forget about it. You know, when it's like, like, like a computer. Multitask, you have all these windows. And the thing is, you're working a mall, we're like, no. That doesn't happen. And so the thing is, is that my wife knows, I don't allow her another box. Because what happens, she'll walk in, you're like, this ain't gonna work. We need to, she starts decorating and all of a sudden. The everything gets completed. I go there and that's how long it's pressed. You have to. Took me a long time to. But the thing is, is that I learned, you know, it's something. You have to. Because think about it. Everything that we're juggling. We're juggling council, we're juggling committees, we're juggling home. Kids, growing kids, and then everything else.
No, your phone, man.
But let me ask you this. How many phone calls do you get complimentary of how great of a job you're doing?
There was. Wait a minute, no, maybe it was.
So apologize for stressing. You know, your sources that they call. I'm dead. What are the pressing?
Oh. Yeah, well, that, that's. But when you said what keeps.
Especially two o'clock in the afternoon. We just had a good lunch. Are y'all ready?
We're ready.
Going home early and I apologize.
You're backing up.
Are y'all ready?
Sure.
We stay ready.
Oh. Yeah, this is ready. Well, I hate to tell you, if you're ready, then. Probably going home early enough to apologize about that. Randy says, no, no, let's stay here.
No, I'm ready.
Pressing needs. I changed my slide because I thought, I overemphasized what keeps you away. So I, I took the size of that question and made it look smaller. Sorry about that. Pressing needs. And you can see how this is a really good visionary exercise. Because tomorrow, we're gonna talk about pillars. But pillars are not pressing needs. But it's a really good way of getting ready for tomorrow. Because you don't want five hundred pillars. You don't want to have five hundred pressing needs. You put all your pressing needs together and, and discuss them, which is what we're gonna do now. And then you sleep on it. And tomorrow, we're gonna have. This is my favorite way to do this, Michael, when we have at night to sleep on it. I'll talk about that in the last few minutes since we're together. Pressing needs, who goes first? Name a pressing need.
Name of the city.
Keep me up at night. Pressing need. What else over here?
Funding. Major projects such as. The treatment plant. And others.
Citizens are glad this is a pressing need, I bet. They, not now, they will be the day this fails.
Yeah.
Of course, they won't call you, they'll just relax. You know, they'll call you. So you said such as treatment plant, what else? Anything else you wanna add to this?
Yeah, one of the things that Michael put up was concerns of a critical infrastructure. Valuers, old repairs. It's all about the money.
Sure.
And added under there is gonna be.
We're putting funding and then these are bullet points under.
Correct. Employees, uh, city employees. Uh, retention and raises. You can recruit them all day long, you gotta be able to retain them.
Excellent, good point. All right. Right here. Pressing needs.
I have to say, too, it's a bit of a catch more about funding. I mean, that's, that's. That is so. We've got so many.
Take good. We did have. Share, share.
Well, I mean, as we, we were talking that sometimes it's really hard working with your constituents on what. They. What they want. And making that compromise to what is best for us.
From various districts, you're coming together. That's a pressing need, working with citizens. Meet their needs. While. Focusing on the whole. So at large, person would think about that. That's good focusing, is that right? While focusing on the whole. Anything else on a pressing need?
Um, one thing that the mayor brought up was securing additional or future water sources.
You guys know where Davis, Texas is? I was never even. But anyway, I lived there five years and the Economic Development Corps had a gathering at the country club. And they brought a professor in from Canyon, uh, West Texas.
State university.
He spoke about, and he was colorful and pictorial, picturesque. And he described that someday. Tumbleweeds would blow up against the skyscrapers. And we're like, not that medieval, but. And how the Okalala, that's the aquifer underneath, was gonna someday dry up. And all these farmers are out there that, you know. They, they irrigate from Okalala. Well, I'll tell you, it was the most upsetting thing I've ever been to in my life. But, you know, it was a pressing need and, and he made us think about it. You know, I mean, I don't know if that, that really ever happened, but. Uh, it's funny how these, these things really be brought, brought to life. Thank you, Mayor. So these are pressing needs.
You know, one more thing that I would put on there, and it just comes to my mind, is accountability. You know, and making sure, I, I think if it, if it birds keeping up at night, is to make sure that. All of our constituents. And their needs and their concerns still valued. I mean, I won't put any. Any, any more emphasis on one area than the other. They all have needs and we've gotta see how we can work to make sure that everybody is valued. As for infrastructure, as for us, um, all of those things. In my opinion, we can't always focus in one place. We gotta make sure that. To remove the volley.
Which is why I think I told you, if, if I was qualified, and I'm not, to work for the state, and they asked me to work with them, I'd say, probably not. Uh, if the federal government called me and I'm not qualified and they ask, but they ask me, I'd say, no, but heck, no. Because I believe in this process right here. Now, I've only been doing it five or six years. Working with qualified, wonderful leaders like Michael and your staff, but also working with city councils that give their time. To say, we wanna make a better place and have that agree. We could say, I'm gonna hold the federal government accountable. But you tell me how that works out.
Yeah.
But I love the city, don't you? And I love city life. And, and Michael and his crew, y'all are my heroes. You're my heroes. This is where we started the day by talking about. Effective governance. That's a good point. It's that accountability, but with kindness and stability. It's a civil accountability, right? So good, anyway. Here's what I want you to do. I want you to go home and not think about this all the time, because my question for you is, have you ever been driving along and just? I have an idea. What I love about the way Michael has set this up is, we could have, I've been asking, you come into it four hours, bam, wham, bam, and I can't. I don't tend to see the creativity as if you go to bed, just relax, get up in the morning, have your time, come up here. Your subconscious has been working, we're gonna have fun tomorrow, okay? All right, Mayor? Michael, anything?
Uh, they can't go home because we've got a meeting at five. No mercy at all.
Okay, then I'm allowed to do this, Scott, you're dismissed. Yeah. So anything else, so besides that?
No, just thank you, thank, obviously, thanks for.
We're gonna have fun tomorrow.
For their time.